Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 11th, 2020, meeting of the Gilderland Central School District Board of Education. I'd just like to remind everyone at first to make sure your cellphones are silenced, and if we could take a moment, I'll stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone, and as those of you who are watching from home can see, we are in person tonight, socially distanced around this room. We have two of our members joining us remotely, Bob Federigo and our president, Seema Rivera. To make it a little easier, since Seema is remote, I will chair the meeting, and she will take over certain sections of it that she wishes to speak to. Let's begin our agenda first, starting with public comment. We have two public comments. I'll read one, and Dr. Wiles will read the other. Our first public comment is from Iwa Santa Maria. Dear board members, as a parent of two children in Linwood Elementary, I am still feeling anxious about our new school year. We decided to opt for remote learning, although district provided almost no information regarding how it is going to be executed. I would love to see more details regarding this option. Will my children form a class with other remote learners? How will the school day look for them? My son is in the ESL program. How will the instructions for ESL be delivered? Please provide me more information on remote learning option. Thank you, regards, Iwa Santa Maria. And thank you for that note.
Okay, the second comment this evening is from Nicole Plunkett, and she writes, "Good afternoon, I just want to express my concerns about this upcoming school year. I have a second and fifth grader at Westmere Elementary School. We have opted to send our kids to school as opposed to remote learning. I know that everyone has been working to find the best solutions, and these are very uncertain times for all of us, but I'm very surprised and worried that it's the middle of August, and the plans that are in place as of right now seem to be highly lacking. I am not very confident in the quality of education that my children will be receiving this upcoming year. I'm not trying to say that I don't appreciate all the effort that has been put in thus far, just that I feel unable to completely prepare, and I'm worried about what school will look like. Thank you very much for your time. Respectfully, Nicole Plunkett."
And thank you also for your input. We also received a number of emails that weren't specifically for public comment, and were hopefully that in the meeting tonight, you'll be hearing some answers to some of these questions. So let's take a look at our agenda. We'll start with our consent items. We have the minutes of the July 1st and July 21st meeting, the CPS and CSE recommendations, number three personnel actions, our financials, A through F. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Thank you, Ben. And second, Rebecca. All those in favor?
Aye.
Seema?
Aye.
Motion passes nine zero, thank you. Next is our information items. We'll begin with curriculum instruction. Dr. Singleton?
Uh, sorry, I was trying to just...
Yeah.
So first item is a textbook recommendation for the board. And the title of the textbook is "Just Mercy" by Bryan Stevenson. The review form is included for you, and this book is to be used in English IX at Gilderland High School. And that is for your information. I'll be seeking your approval at a future board meeting. Second item, I'm very pleased to announce that Gilderland has earned the New York State Public High School Athletic Association School of Excellence Award for 1920. In order to earn this award, at least 75% of the school's varsity interscholastic sports teams must qualify and receive the Scholar-Athlete Team Award, and that is a team GPA of 90% to achieve that, and that is over the course of the school year. Due to the cancellation of the 2020 spring sports season, this award is based on the fall 2019 and winter 1920 sports seasons. 21 out of 24, or 88%, of Gilderland's teams, fall and winter varsity teams qualified for the Scholar-Athlete Team Award. And the sports recognized this year are boys cross-country, girls cross-country, field hockey, boys golf, girls golf, boys scholar, excuse me, soccer, girls soccer, girls swimming, girls tennis, boys volleyball, and girls volleyball. And from the winter sports, there are girls basketball, bowling, boys indoor track, girls indoor track, hockey, wrestling, boys skiing, girls skiing, boys swimming, and gymnastics. So congratulations to all of our scholar athletes for their great work. And my next item is a bit of an update regarding virtual learning, as well as some other pieces of information regarding the opening of the school year. So I'll give you some updated information. This was written as of 10:30 on Friday, so we do have new numbers to report to you. But at that time, we have received 959 requests from parents to opt out of transportation for their children. That number has increased. We are well over 1,000 who have opted out of transportation. Likewise, we had 505 parents who requested virtual instruction on Friday. At this point, we are well over 1,000 as well. And the number of students learning from home will greatly impact the manner in which we deliver instruction to those students. So part of the question here, I think, is the chicken and the egg part. For us to plan accordingly around remote instruction, we have to know how many students are going to be remote, and that's part of the challenge here. So now we have those numbers in play, so we can really dig into the, you know, the more granular level of the planning. So we are continuing to refine the instructional plan to ensure that high-quality instruction will be provided, the technology needed is in place and fully functional, and that our teachers are not called upon to do something that may not be possible or manageable. While it may appear to be an easy process to some to simply stream instruction, there are many legal, practical, and pedagogical considerations that must be given full consideration when attempting to provide instruction to students in a classroom and, at the same time, to students at home. So we have legal considerations around education law, FERPA, edLaw 2D, and others. We've conducted a number of mock activities, and our conclusion, basically mock remote instruction, and our conclusions are that it's really extremely difficult and challenging for our teachers to plan, deliver, and manage instruction, and students in two separate worlds simultaneously. So at this point, we fully expect that our virtual learning will be a blend of live or synchronous learning facilitated by the classroom teacher with some offline activities, which would be projects, readings, assignments, et cetera, to be completed by the student while at home. In some instances, a teacher may deliver instruction by live streaming a lesson, or they may opt to pre-record a lesson or provide a screencast. Our teachers are going to need some autonomy here, and they will need to make informed decisions about the best and most appropriate strategy to deliver lessons and resources within the scope of the objectives and desired outcomes of their courses. Additionally, the final numbers, as I said, who have opted for the virtual learning will greatly affect the decisions around who delivers the virtual instruction. So that's the other question that's coming up, is who is the teacher that's going to be providing that? And that could not be determined until we had a final set of numbers, and we've actually been working on that today. So those decisions around virtual instruction and how students and staff are distributed for in-person learning is definitely a work in progress, but I think now that we have a fairly firm set of numbers from parents, we are able to work with those numbers and begin the process of creating the actual class sections, both remote and in-person, and then assigning teachers as we can within that. So that's in the works right now.
Dame, you have a question?
Sure.
So you said it's over 1,000 parents. Do you know how many children?
Yeah, yeah. So I'll give you the breakdown here. So Altamont Elementary, we had a total of 62, and actually, I think that's a little bit up since this was last updated. 133 at Gilderland Elementary, Linwood Elementary had 58, Pine Bush 88, Westmere 141, Farnsworth Middle School had 195, and GHS had 253. Those have increased slightly since this spreadsheet, so it's, those are the ballpark numbers right now.
One other comment or question is, what about the people that didn't respond? Like, is that considered at all?
It's considered. The default is in-person. So if someone did not respond, our plan is to have them in-house. And I think, you know, part of the challenge here is we have to remind ourselves that we're operating under social distancing. So everybody that's going to be within the school is going to factor into the plans around the number of cohorts that we have, the number of classrooms we need to utilize, and the number of staff members we need to access and assign to those sections. So we are very much taking a conservative approach there and assuming that we are probably going to have more in-person than likely will play out, but that's simply because we have to be prepared for that social distancing impact.
Worried about people that didn't check their email, or didn't have access to email through the summer, or whatever?
Yeah, I mean, we've received, and we've talked about the email, reopening email thing. We've received a number of requests from parents for support to be able to get into the portal, and we've been very responsive to that, so. We have a very high return rate. There are some who have not answered yet. I'm not surprised by that, because I think people are still waiting to see what's it really going to look like.
Yeah.
And part of that is not going to come until we have the numbers that we can actually schedule and plan from. But again, the default is in-person.
There was a deadline. Is there, like, another deadline, or is there another?
Second deadline? Not at this point. Not at this point. We don't have one. I think, you know, the work that we'll be doing this week, and again, we actually started, Alan Lockwood and I locked, we locked ourselves in a room this afternoon and just started playing around with it, and we think we have a working model for the elementary that will be, number one, manageable for teachers, because this, I can tell you, is not an easy undertaking to think about, you know, delivering instruction to a group of kids who are in front of you while at the same time trying to deliver the instruction at home. So ideally, what we're going to be able to do is actually assign a teacher to work with the students who are at home, so that you don't have all teachers trying to do both, but you have, you know, most of the teachers are focused on the in-person instruction, potentially one teacher at a grade level may be focused solely on the remote instruction. And just the way the numbers have played out and what Alan and I were able to do today, we think we have a very viable solution to that, which will allow us now to go forward and start assigning the teachers to the various groups.
If, thanks. If you were to recommend to a parent who's listening, how they could stay abreast of the decisions as they're being made, how will they be communicated? What would be the best way for a parent to stay up on the decisions?
Well, I mean, I think we have the FAQ document that came out today. I mean, that's one place that I would say to go, because...
And that's on, that's on the website?
Yeah.
Okay, went up today.
It went out as an email message to all families right around 5:30.
Okay.
But I don't know as a question, you know, the FAQ might not, but say, say you make a decision on some level and how it's going to proceed, where would you put that, and how would parents be?
Well, some of it is not going to be public notification. So when we start to assign a teacher to a class, and there are students within that class, very similar to normal circumstances, a parent would get notification that your child is with teacher X or teacher Y. That's not a public announcement. That's basically an announcement that goes directly to the families.
So they'll get an email, read that?
They'll get, right, they'll get, you know, the same kind of a notification that we've had in past years. It's going to be inevitably a little bit later than what it's been in past years, just by the complexity of what we're dealing with. But those communications will be direct with families.
And then from that point, how the learning would be structured would come then from the teacher to the students, to the parents?
Yes, I mean, I think we can, as I just described, I mean, I think there are some general assumptions that we can make at this point in time about the balance that teachers will strive for between what is synchronous and what is asynchronous.
Right.
I do think there will be some differences by level, grade level for sure, but also by discipline. So, you know, you think about the difference between English class, for example, and a math class. An English class may be far more discussion-based, maybe classroom discussion-based, where a teacher is, you know, similar to what I'm doing with Barbara and Seema. They have an active Google Meet going where there's an ongoing class discussion taking place. A math teacher, however, may need to demonstrate how to solve a problem, or whatever it happens to be, and they want to do a screencast of the actual computations behind that. So there are going to be differences based on course, based on developmental appropriateness. And I think right now, where we've landed with the instructional task forces is that we need to give teachers the room to be able to determine what's the best strategy for what they're trying to accomplish at a given time. You know, if we are able to assign a teacher directly to be a remote-only teacher, and again, I think that will be the ideal, that remote-only teacher, I think, will have much greater opportunity to do more live and synchronous work than if a teacher is called upon to do both in-person and remote at the same time. That is physically challenging for a teacher. If you just envision a teacher, we did this walkthrough the other day, you know, they're manipulating things in the classroom, they're trying to access the technology in the classroom, they're managing the class, they're dealing with behaviors, and then, on the same time, trying to keep students engaged remotely is an extremely challenging thing to do. So we're hoping to kind of separate those two things, so one can focus on remote while the others can focus on the in-person.
Hey, Damian, sorry, I have one.
Sure.
Just one more. So you said it was 1,000 kids or 1,000 parents?
Kids.
Okay. That's all. I have four kids, like, the number could be tripled if it was just parents. Thanks. Not 1,000 families, 1,000 individual children.
Right, right, which is about 20, yeah, 20 to 25% of our population. So it's a good number.
Anyone else have questions?
I'm wondering if this is a good time for Damian to talk about a rationale for the semester-long commitment as opposed to a 10-week commitment, because we've had a number of questions about that now.
Questions, yeah, yeah.
Right, and I absolutely understand that it's a big commitment to think about it for a semester. I think there were a couple of points that we discussed pretty extensively regarding that timeframe. One is, I'll kind of go back to what I said previously, when we think about the planning around in-person instruction, in-person instruction and our classes, everything is driven by social distancing. So if you now start reintroducing additional bodies within the schools at any point in time, it's very likely that it may push us to a tipping point where we have to regroup students. We have a finite amount of space, so on average, we can fit 14 students in a classroom. If we now bring back, you know, 10, 15, 20 students at a grade level, for example, we may not be able to accommodate them physically, which means we may have to shuffle the deck again, which means teachers may have to be reassigned and students may have to be regrouped. That is a worst-case scenario. We don't want that to play out at all. I think the other line of thinking from a health and safety perspective, if you think about what a number of universities have done, they've basically changed their schedules so that their semester ends around Thanksgiving. So our thinking from a health and safety perspective is we'd be going in the opposite direction. We'd basically be bringing people back into the schools right around Thanksgiving. So those two things were kind of, you know, combined, I would say, the rationale behind thinking that it's really better to think about it on a semester basis. The other important point to make is that we have a number of courses at the middle school and the high school that are semester-based courses. So the clean breaking point at the secondary level is the semester. We do have some 10-week courses at the middle level, but they are far fewer than what we have for semester-based courses. So, you know, a semester-based course in particular, if you bring students back midstream, you know, again, that could create some logistic nightmares and then create some regrouping of students, which we really, we don't want to disrupt their experience once we get up and running. We really want them to have a whole experience. So I totally understand, though, that perspective. It is a commitment, and it's hard to project out that far at this point in time, not knowing what's going to happen. I mean, there's so much that we don't know about what falls along and bring to us, but that's basically our thinking at this point in time.
Yeah, that was good. Dr. Wiles will move to superintendent information.
Okay, thank you. My first item is around our summer programs. So this week, on Friday, will mark the end of our extended school year program for our students with disabilities who are at Gilderland Elementary School. And I just want to thank and recognize our pupil personnel services director, Alisa Knowles, and our extended school year principal, Steve Wolf, as well as Cliff Noonie, Danielle Poirier, Mary Swagerman, our head nurse, Megan Beck, and all of the ESY faculty and staff who took part in this first return to school for these students. I need to point out how quickly they put that program together, because initially, the governor had only allowed us to do remote extended school year programming, and then there was a quick change, and so they really did a remarkable job. It has been tremendously successful by any measure. So we're really thankful for our team over there and for our students and our parents who put their faith in us, and we were able to give their children a good experience this summer. We also had a remote three-week summer program for ENL students that ended on July 31st. We had 55 students who were able to take advantage of that remote learning opportunity, and we appreciate Marsha Berneri for putting that together. It does help bridge that time for our students. And then we also had middle and high school students who could access a remote summer school if they were in need of credit recovery, and we had 79 students from Gilderland in grade six through 12 who participated, and that's wrapping up this week as well, but there are no Regents exams, which is usually the crowning glory of summer school. So my next item is on the reopening of schools, and since I wrote what is in front of the board, you know, things keep changing. It's like by the hour. So let me provide a little bit of an update and share some current thinking that we're exploring in terms of making the start of our school year a little bit smoother. So as you know, the governor announced on Friday that all schools in New York State can reopen. We did submit our plan as required on July 31st to both the State Education Department and the Department of Health. You might have seen in the paper today, there were some schools who didn't do that. I quickly went back to double-check that I didn't indeed hit send. But while we submitted our plan, we are continuing to work through literally thousands of details to bring the plan to life, and it is a daunting, daunting task. As part of his announcement, the government, governor is requiring every school district to host three information sessions for the community and one for faculty and staff by next Friday, August 21st. We scheduled those today, and it's in the letter that went home to families, but I can share that with you right now. The three for families will be, the first one will be Tuesday, August 18th at 7:00 PM. The second one will be Wednesday, August 19th at 10:00 AM, and the third will be Thursday, August 20th at 7:00 PM. And we're going to use a similar format as we did for our panel discussion back on July 28th. By the way, anything we did prior to last Friday doesn't count among our three, so we will do some more. So we will have a presentation to begin, and we'll focus on many of those topics that we're hearing so much about, the requirement for students to wear masks, and what will that look like, and how will we monitor it, and how will we enforce it? What kind of guidance will we give our teachers in order to be comfortable managing yet one more part of their classroom? We'll do a lot with our remote learning and the instructional program. By next Tuesday, we'll have a good handle on at least the major structures around how instruction will be delivered, so we can provide folks an opportunity to see what that looks like. And then we have a reopening email address that has been, you know, filled with lots and lots of questions, and we will use some of the questions from them to build the presentation as well, so that we know we're hitting the topics that families want to hear. In the communication that went out today, Amy Parat included a link, so if people have individual questions they want addressed at the session that they choose to go to, they can submit them, and that will help build our discussion. We will have our subcommittee co-chairs answering the questions like we did back on the 28th, so you get a variety of perspectives, and the people have been working on this for the last several weeks, giving you the firsthand information. And then we'll also announce during the session that if people who are watching have a question that they didn't think of to send ahead of time, and it's something that we said triggered it, we can have them send it to that email address, and Amy will be monitoring it and can jump in to say, you know, we have a question that came in, can we address it? So we're trying to make it as interactive as possible, you know, given the limits of technology and so on. So those are all next week. We are also required to do an information session for our faculty and staff. Our principals and our other administrators have been doing regular optional meetings for faculty and staff throughout the summer, so we, but we will do another one, really from the district perspective, and we'll address some of the questions and comments and concerns we've been hearing from our employees. I understand there's lots of questions, because there's lots of uncertainty, and, you know, that's a, it's a difficult environment to work in. So all of that will be next week. The faculty meeting will be Wednesday afternoon, and that will be interactive. We're going to do that over Zoom, because it doesn't need to be livestreamed out to the whole world.
And will all of those be recorded?
We'll record everything, yes, and post to the website, so people can, you know, watch it at their leisure if they're not available at any of those times.
Great.
And the three sessions for our parents, they will be essentially the same. I mean, the questions might be slightly different based on the group, but the upfront presentation will be consistent. The other thing I want to add is about the actual start of the school year. And just this morning, in the district office team meeting, we were thinking about the first day of school for our learners, and we'll share this idea and get the, get feedback from the board. Right now, we are scheduled to have our faculty returned for the first day of professional development on September 1st, and we were going to do September 1st, 2nd, and 3rd is professional development. And then the first day with students back on campus, September 8th. What we're proposing is that we stick with the three days at the beginning of September for our faculty and staff, that we are as efficient as possible in the amount of required training and activities they need to do while they're there, so we can maximize their planning time and their preparation time. And then on the 8th, we'd like to propose that for those first four days of the school year, so eight, nine, 10, 11, we are fully remote and use that time for teachers to establish routines with their students, to do training about the proper way to wear a mask, what social distancing means, reminders about handwashing, discussions about platforms, like all those logistical pieces that are going to be essential for the successful start of the school year. But during that time, we'd also like to provide an opportunity for our students in those grades who are transitioning to actually come to school buildings and see their classrooms and where they'll be. So that's our kindergarten students, who are getting some transition activities right now. The buildings are doing some small activities. But our 5th grade is moving to a new spot at Farnsworth, so are our 6th graders. So we would schedule time separately for small groups of students to go and visit the middle school, and then the same thing at the high school. And that would be spread across the four days, so we can maintain social distancing and, you know, manage the flow of traffic in those buildings. And then all children would return on Monday, September 14th. Instruction would begin, whether it's remote or in-person. The beauty of this is that we would not need to adjust our calendar. We would provide instruction on those four days, so they would be instructional days that would count toward our 180. And it would, I think, provide teachers with some additional time to plan, problem-solve, begin relationship-building, communicate with parents, you know, all of those things that are going to be essential for the school year. So let me turn DOT. Did I miss anything in that? Thoughts?
If some of those transition students might choose remote, so they wouldn't be coming, right?
Right.
So how would they then?
They would have remote instruction, like, so kind of the blanket is everyone gets some remote instruction over those four days.
Okay.
But if I'm a 5th grader, maybe, you know, Wednesday morning is the time, so there would be remote instruction during that time for that child.
Okay. But then there will be another time if they wish to come?
They could, they would have it designated here.
Will be a different time?
Yes. So we'd have to map all that out.
Yeah, I know. And my other thought was that if the teachers are using those four days to introduce the students to routines and whatever, will they be talking from their classroom? Could they take them around the classroom, show them things in the classroom?
I don't see why not. They could do, you know, little Loom videos.
Yeah.
Show them, here's where your desks will be, here's where this is, here's where that is. So you kind of hear it here first. We haven't even had this conversation with our larger administrative team because we, you know, time is of the essence these days.
I think staff would be more in favor of something like that.
It's in line with a lot of the feedback that I've heard from parents and some teachers. I don't think it would be a surprise, I don't think it would be a surprise that you're thinking about it or we're thinking about it. I don't think they'll be like, oh, that's a novel idea. I think people know what's going on in different districts. And I think they're leaning towards wanting that. So I think it'll be well received.
I think it's a great idea.
Are you asking us for support for that, for the, for the remote for the first few days?
Feedback and support.
Okay. I mean, I'm in support of that, you know, to give everybody more time to set up and gives the opportunity for teachers to show students. But I think if they do, to have that schedule of when they're going to have the small groups, like sooner than later, I know it's easy for me to say, but.
Any other thoughts?
I have a comment.
Yeah, absolutely.
Listening to Damian describe what teachers are going to be, you know, what's going to be required of teachers, I couldn't help but feel like we were asking perhaps too much of them. And so therefore, I support giving them more time. I would even support giving them more than you're proposing, to be honest with you.
And we don't know if the governor's going to say in November, oh, the school year is only going to be 170 days or 160 days. So we really have to take advantage of those days at the beginning. Or may say 180. Who knows?
At this point, the point has been made at his level that 180 will be required. Now, we have all learned that things can change. But, you know, I think at this point, the responsible thing to do is to plan for 180.
Yeah, I guess that's what I was saying.
Will you be having this conversation with GTA members and teacher staff?
I actually, I was on the phone with Tarama Loig Raki earlier today, and I floated the idea. She's very supportive of it.
Okay.
We have two meetings with our leadership team on Thursday. One is where we're going to be in the large gym, trying to put all the pieces together in the, in the large. And we'll talk more about what this might look like at each of the three levels. I think they're going to be supportive of it, too. I think they're all, you know, the days fly by with speed that is scary because there's just so much to be done.
Do we have any flexibility throughout the year to say at a certain point, we want to have time for teachers to regroup, or we need a half day or something? Do we have that flexibility if we reach a point where things are getting?
The, we have, under current law, we can use four superintendent conference days for teacher professional development that can count toward 180 days.
Okay.
However, the, I think there is some flexibility because you might recall, a few years back, there was a rule put in place with, for minutes of instruction, 990 at the secondary level, 900 minutes at the elementary. That's been waived. So I think we may have some room for half days.
That's what I was thinking, half days.
You know, as we see how this begins to unfold.
Right, exactly.
And, you know, where the glitches are. And so I do think there is more flexibility in that respect.
Marie, staff would report on those days, just no students?
Yes. Yep. Unless you're in K 5, 6, 8, or 9 for some portion of those days.
Then the students would come back for a portion.
Yeah. It's a kind of an orientation kind of experience.
I think it's a really good idea, especially for the kids who are transitioning to a different school. Could definitely like take a little bit of the stress and anxiety out of it. And the other kids, too, like who are going back to the same school, like having an idea of what to expect when they come back could definitely help them out and ease that transition for everyone.
All right.
Okay. Is that it?
That's, that's all.
That's all.
And actually, I think I just did my next item, too.
Yes, you did. Which is good. Okay, we're up to number three, the Board of Educ, Board President Information. And I only have one item. The Annual Convention and Education Expo of the New York State School Boards Association, originally scheduled to be held in New York City on October 29, 31, 2020, will now be held online. We've all been expecting this. The convention is being converted to a two-week-long virtual event in October. And we'll be getting more information. I know we've got, probably all have gotten some. At least we're aware that if this was going to happen, we'll be getting more. Is the registration deadline still the 17th, Linda? Do you know? Have they changed that? I haven't heard anything about that.
I read it very quickly the other day.
All right. Well, if we see something, we'll let everybody know. Because if you are interested in doing this, we don't really know how it's going to be done. It's going to be evenings, and how these programs are going to be presented. So when we find out more, if it sounds like something you'd like to do, please let Mrs. Livingston know so that she can get you signed up. Excellent. Okay, action items. Neil School Business Management?
Thank you.
You have a whole bunch of things for us.
Yeah, I was going to say you had one item. I have many items. So we'll make up for all of that. First item is approval of agreements for the provision of programs and services for our students with disabilities. I'll read the names of who we are making agreements with. First is Linda J. Burkhart, then Forwin Saratoga Oak Hill School, Parsons Child and Family Center, St. Catherine's Center for Children, and Upstate Cerebral Policy.
And we'll need a motion to accept A. Thank you, Blanca. And second, Judy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes nine.
Aye.
Thank you. Passes nine zero.
Next item is approval of an agreement with SUNY Brockport to accept students for internship and practicum experience.
And you have a motion to accept that one. Ben, thank you. And Rebecca, second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes nine zero.
Aye.
Next is requesting approval for the application for a refund of real property taxes for the 2019-20 school year. This is one parcel of property in the town of Bethlehem, where there were two owners of the household. One owner transferred title to the other owner. They both had veterans exemptions. And the town took the wrong veterans exemption. So it's about $920 correction.
I have a motion to accept C. Judy, second? Blanca, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second. Aye.
Passes nine zero. D?
Now, we have a resolution authorizing the destruction of ballots. And this is a recommendation from our school attorney that every time we have an election or a Capitol Project vote, more than, when more than six months have elapsed, that we do, the board adopts a resolution to have a destruction of those ballots. So the votes that we're talking about are October 16, 2018, and May 21, 2019.
I have a motion to accept D. Luciana, second? Kelly, thank you. Any question, I always forget that part. Any questions or concerns?
What have we done in the past? Have the same thing?
Yes. You've approved this resolution every year, essentially.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Passes nine zero. E?
Okay, next is a recommendation to approve private transportation contract extensions with the following carriers, Durham School Services, Northland Transportation, and Rajah Group LLC.
I have a motion to place that. Ben, thank you. And Rebecca, second? Any questions, concerns?
I have a question.
Yes, Blanca.
Is the number, are the number of students that have opted out of transportation going to impact this need in any way?
We don't believe so. There's, there's very few students that run on, that are part of this. Most of them are students with disabilities. So we had already confirmed these replacements. So they wouldn't be opting out of, already kind of opted out of our school district. They're attending another school that can better meet their needs. So with the opt-out, we'll be able to go back and look back. I mean, you've authorized the contracts. We don't have to execute the contracts for some reason. They're not needed, but we anticipate all of these students will be attending the schools they've attended in the past.
Any other questions? Discussion? Okay. All those in favor of E, contracted transportation services?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero.
Next is a recommendation to approve school lunch and breakfast program prices for the 2020-21 school year. At the elementary, the recommendation is $1.95 for breakfast and $2.80 for lunch. Middle school, $1.95 for breakfast, $3.05 for lunch. And at the high school, $2.50 for breakfast and $3.05 for lunch. These are not increases over the, over the 2019-20 school year. The recommendation from Megan Becker, Food Service Director, is that we maintain the prices. We did, surprisingly, we made money last year. Not so much in the lunch program, but we had some growth in the breakfast program that helped to offset that. So we did have a profit last year in the school lunch program. Given where we are with food insecurity and still the pandemic being part of our lives, Megan and I both believe that holding prices same for next year is something that we should be doing and are able to do financially and are making that recommendation.
I have a motion to accept that. Judy, second. Blanca, thank you. All the, any discussion? Questions?
I just think that's great that we're able to keep the price the same. And I think that the school lunch program has done a wonderful job.
I would agree. They've done an outstanding job.
Thanks, Blanca. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Passes nine zero.
Next is a resolution to accept the annual risk assessment and special area internal audit reports on payroll and overtime and purchasing prepared by Questar three BOCs and approve the corresponding corrective action plans as recommended by the Audit Committee.
I have a motion to accept G. Ben, thank you. Rebecca, second? Any discussion, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero.
Next is a resolution to approve agreements to provide shelter and/or transportation service in the event of emergency evacuation. The first one is for our school district to service an emergency shelter site and/or to provide transportation to Tech Valley High School. And the second one is for Farnsworth Middle School to service an emergency shelter site for Christaking Early Childhood Center. These are not new agreements, but we do periodically update those. And you've seen them before with different institutions. So sometimes it's us designating a shelter site for our students. Other times, it's us acting as a shelter site for other institutions. So in this case, it would be using our facilities for those schools.
I have a motion to accept H. Luciana, second. Blanca, thank you. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero.
Next, we have four general fund transfers outlined in your materials. They total $214,476 that we need to make as end of year adjustments.
I have a motion to accept A. Luciana, second. Rebecca, thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Nine zero passes.
Next is the approval of the final 2019-20 BOCs service contracts and the preliminary 2020-21 BOCs service contracts. This is a legal requirement that the board approve last year's completed contracts and preliminary contracts for the upcoming school year.
I have a motion for J, please. Judy, second. Luciana, thank you. Any questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Nine zero passes.
Next is, sorry, sorry. Next is a resolution to confirm the tax rules and authorize the tax levy for the 2020-21 school year. And I will provide you with the rates. So the levy is the same as what we anticipated as part of our budget process for the school districts. So the total tax levy is $74,999.95. The tax rates recommended for next year are for the town of Gilderland, $1,700.10. For Bethlehem, $18.01. For New Scotland, $18.79. And for Knox, $32.89.
I have a motion to accept K. Judy, second? Rebecca, thank you. Any discussion, questions? Okay, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Nine zero. Oh, opposed. I'm sorry, eight. Opposed, one. Thanks, Blanca, for pointing that out. L?
Okay, next we have a motion concerning the tax warrant. And basically, this establishes the date of the tax collection period. And that would be from September 1, 2020, to November 2, 2020. As I mentioned, the school tax levy overall, but we also have the library tax levy. That's $3,995,978. And those two levies will be part of the tax bill that residents receive.
I have a motion to accept L. Kelly, second? Judy, thank you. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor of L? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight to one.
Finally, my last item here this evening is a resolution to authorize funding of current reserves in the amount of unassigned fund balance exceeding 4% of the 2020-21 voter adopted budget.
I have a motion to accept letter M. Luciana, second?
Almost.
Second, Barbara. Thank you, Barbara. Any discussion, questions?
Neil, what reserve funds is this money going to?
We're going to work that out at the time when we have our final audit numbers. And we'll be discussing that with the auditors as well to get their opinion. Right now, what we're looking at are those funds that we can get to easily, knowing that the next few years are going to be difficult financially. So we have reserves established for retirement costs, for example, pension costs for both the employees' retirement system and the teachers' retirement system, with interest rates down and earnings down. And we've seen already the comptrollers report on that. It was negative earnings for the last quarter. We know that upcoming, we're going to have to, schools, districts are going to have to contribute more to the pension costs than they have up till now. Because part of it's funded through investment earnings, and then part of it's funded through school districts. So whenever the market goes down, the inverse happens and school districts have to pay more and vice versa. That doesn't always happen in the first year. That may not happen in 2021. We may see a relatively stable contribution rate. That's a five-year rolling average, the way it works. So if you've had good years, they accumulate. The bad years start to come on, but you still have four good years with one bad year. And then you have two bad years with three good years. So, and then it shifts in the other direction. So, but I think it's important that we start, put money aside. We know that's going to happen. There's nothing on the horizon that says economic indicators are going to recover anytime soon. So it's not just a one year. We'll get through this and then interest earnings will, or investment earnings will start back to where they were. We see prolonged economic recovery. So at least in those two categories, we know we have expenses. We know that it's going to get worse and we can access those funds. The other would be some of the benefit areas. So things like unemployment, where we've had extra, extra hit this year than what we've had in the past. We're above normal. So workers' compensation is another area. So where we have common expenses every year that are part of our budget, we have money set aside in funds that we can access if need be for that purpose.
So when Mike Rossi, whoever does our audit, you're saying he's going to take a look at, like based on his experience, where we, where we'll likely need the money?
It's, it's. It's, it's going to be our decision, but it's always good to have that conversation of what makes the most sense. And again, what we're looking at is if we have a difficult year coming up where revenues are down and expenses are rising, how can we compensate for that in a budgetary context? So without raising property taxes higher than we would want to. So we have some of these reserves. So basically, we have other revenue sources that we can use to offset property taxes and fund expenses within the budget. So again, we're trying to match up where we have probable expenditures in the budget, where we have money available that we can offset with revenue. So something like, I wouldn't recommend, for example, putting money in a capital reserve at this point. We certainly have those needs and we're going to have those needs, but that is outside of our budgetary process. So if we put it in the capital reserve, it can only be used for capital purposes down the road if we have a project. So it kind of locks that money up for a while and doesn't give us easy access to that in terms of a budgetary context. So it wouldn't be something like a capital reserve.
So this resolution just on paper says this money's not in the general fund. We're going to put it somewhere else. We just haven't decided yet.
Right. We haven't decided. So what we're, basically, the resolution's saying if you have more than 4%, which we're anticipating at this point, that the board is authorizing, basically, that we can take whatever amount is in excess of that. We're looking at approximately 1.2 million right now. The ability to name reserves down the road and put that 1.2 million or whatever that final number is, we can allocate that. We'll be back to the board with the actual allocations. But at this point, this, because of the timing of board meetings and so on, and when we're having our audit, gives us that authority, knowing that we have excess money and having the authorization to look at different places to put that at this point.
Yeah, I guess that was my question. You're coming, you're going to come back before we allocate. Yeah, okay.
Is there an end date as to when it has to be allocated?
Well, it'll be part of our final financial statements, our audited financial statements. So as, as we look at end of the year finances, what money is exceeding the 4%, we'll want to get that, maintain that at 4%. That's our, our safety net, our cushion. That's just our general savings account. So the goal right now would be to keep that at 4%. Maximum flexibility there. And then building, for money beyond that, building it where we will have flexibility, flexibility in the future going forward. So again, money that we know we have known expenses for every year gives us that flexibility to react to different economic circumstances in 2021, 2022, and so on.
Thanks, Neil. Any other questions or discussion?
Just a question.
Yep.
Is there any way that that 4% or 1.2 million can be used, you know, to the taxpayer or used to refund the taxpayer or to give them a tax break in future years? Just wondering.
It can be. So anytime we have fund balance generated, so we, our income exceeds our expenses, the way to do that would be to lower the tax levy, the amount that we're collecting from taxpayers. So we did approve earlier the tax levy and the tax rate that's associated with that. That can be done. The recommendation right now, though, understanding the economic uncertainty that's out there in the community, knowing people have to pay taxes along with other things. The other thing that we have to look at is if we do that, we position ourselves worse going forward. So we could make, give a, give back a lesser tax rate to people in the short term. What will that mean in the long term and succeeding fiscal years? If we knew this was a one-year blip and we could recover from that, that might be something that I would recommend the board consider. However, what we're looking at is a protracted economic downturn. And I think going forward, especially if right on the table right now is possible 20% takeback of state aid from state government. So where does that money come from? So what we might be doing is giving people a small tax break now, only to give them a super large tax break the following year. What we've tried to do is maintain some consistency, so not those, those peaks and valleys. So this approach allows us to kind of mitigate those economic factors over time and keep a reasonable level on our, our taxes and our tax paying community over time.
Any other questions? Thoughts? Okay. And so can we vote on M appropriation to reserve funds? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Hearing none. Nine zero passes. Good job, Neil. You're all done. For now. Superintendent, Dr. Wiles?
Thank you. I have two items this evening for action. The first is for the board's consideration of the approval of a memorandum of agreement between the school district and the Gilderland Central School District Teachers Association. This extends their contract through June 30, 2021.
Do I have a motion to accept, oh, the contract? Blanca, second. Judy, thank you. Any discussion? Comments? Questions? Very happy to, to be here tonight doing this. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Passes nine zero.
Great. Thank you so much. And my last item here is the professional development plan for 2020-2021. This came before the board as an information item way back when in July, it seems like many years ago. So for tonight, we're asking for the board's approval.
Do I have a motion to accept the professional development plan? Ben, second. Luciana, thank you. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Discussion questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Passes nine zero. Thank you all. Okay, item number seven is board committee reports. I'm assuming that no committees have met. Okay. Could I ask that the chairs from last year's committees, that's business practices, audit, communications, and policy, if the last year's chairs would be kind enough to call a meeting, a first meeting, so that at least the committees could get up and running and you can appoint a new chair and begin your work for this year? Okay? And you can do that through Mrs. Livingston there. She'll send out a survey monkey for you and, and notify all the committee people. Okay. Number eight. Did any public comment come in, Linda, since we've been meeting? No? Okay, no public comment for number two. All right, number nine is board issues, ideas, and sharing. Before I open that up, I just wanted to note that we did put under there our goal setting session. And I'm going to ask Seema, who wanted to speak to this a little bit before we open it up for discussion. Oh, Seema's frozen. Okay.
Seema, can you hear it?
Yes, sorry about that. I just got kicked off at the worst time.
That's okay. Did you hear the?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So Gloria just handed it to you to talk about the goal setting.
Okay, I just wanted to tell everybody that you go back to the Google Doc where we started our notes on the goals. I cleaned them up a bit from the last meeting and started putting them into the order of SMART goals. And I talked to Marie and Gloria about this, that it's cleaned up a bit, but I think we'll hold off until the September meeting to further discuss because there's obviously a lot happening and changing with the reopening that I thought we could pay better attention to it in the September meeting. Does anybody have questions about that?
Seema, do we, can we still add between now and then or no?
Oh, yeah. You can go in there, add your notes, add comments, you know. Yeah, you can go in there and do that. Feel free to do that.
Thank you.
Seema, do I remember correctly that we thought we'd set up a special meeting just to do the goals rather than trying to squeeze it in? Do I remember that correctly?
We did talk a little bit of.
Yeah, maybe we, we did say that. A special meeting after school opens, like later September.
Right, that we could just focus on the wording and filling out the SMART goals kind of thing. We had, we had narrowed it down to our four major areas, which was the achievement gap, looking at the achievement gap, focusing on the whole child, the focus on diversity and equity, social justice, and facilities, looking at our facilities now to the future.
Yeah, so those same topics are in the top four to five goals on that Google Doc. And yes, you're right, Gloria. We said we were going to put a separate meeting to update that, but then in addition, add it on to our regular board agenda.
Yes.
Just to kind of see where we are. But I think, I think the main point for, for tonight is that the notes are cleaned up from the last meeting and they're a bit more solidified. I don't think having nine goals is probably the best way to go. And so we just chose the first four or five. So if you go back and any other comments, or if you want to add other things, you can. And Gloria and I can send out a doodle and reschedule, or, sorry, schedule a new update meeting.
I think it's important that we did decide to have it as always on our agenda, a reference to what's been done on the goals since the last meeting. So we're constantly going to come back to that.
Seema, can I ask a question?
Sure.
In reading one of Ben's commentary, an issue that had not been brought up when we had the goal setting session, that he has since brought up, is the whole idea of substance abuse and ways, you know, to attack, to attack that. And I'm wondering if anybody else had any thoughts? Because I thought that had that been brought up in our original session, you know, that may be one of the more doable things as even with this COVID epidemic that we might want to tackle. He mentioned a number of things that certainly wouldn't happen this year about, you know, having a place at the middle school and the high school that kids could just sort of hang out and, you know, how that would look like. But I thought, you know, it made a lot of sense and I certainly would have considered it had it been brought up at the, at our original meeting. Now, I just wonder if anybody else had read it and had any thoughts about it.
I just want to point out, those are Blanca's.
Yeah, I read through the document and I saw the added goals. I think Gloria, Kelly, Ben, and I had notes on there. And so I read through, there, I mean, I don't disagree with most of the things written there. I just think to have a manageable amount of goals, especially considering all the, you know, different things that will be happening this year. So I'm not opposed to that. I just think that needs to probably, that didn't rise to the top in terms of priorities from the last two or three meetings. So I think we can add it on there and then, you know, continue to discuss it.
Okay, thanks.
I think, I think from my thinking, Barbara, I guess I saw that as falling under that topic of the whole child. And that might be a sub thing of what we want to focus on within that. Because the whole child is a huge topic. So we may, in a sense, hone in on a few things this year that we want to focus on. So I saw that as a good one to look at.
Again, they're Blanca's ideas.
So that was actually my idea, but that's fine, Ben. But I just wanted to say, yeah, I'm thinking about it more. I could see it fitting under the whole child.
And that's something we can talk about when we meet and fine tune the wording and, and then the action plan of what we actually want to do under each of those goals.
You're both BG. That's what happened.
Oh, that's what happened.
I'm actually bag, unfortunately.
Oh, you were bag? I thought it, oh.
I wrote bag, lol.
And I kept thinking it was Ben.
I did too.
Sorry, Blanca.
Mystery solved.
Anything else, Seema, did you want to say on that? I think we're good. I think we're good.
Sorry, I'm trying to mute myself. No, that, that was it for, for tonight.
Okay, so we'll, we'll get together and send out that doodle and we'll try to set up a, a separate meeting just for this. But we'll do this and get the wording down.
Yeah, thank you, Gloria.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, I think, any other ideas or sharing or board topics that you'd like to bring up?
Well, was there one more public comment, I thought?
I did. I said it. And there wasn't anything that came in. I asked Linda.
Okay.
I said, was there anything else that came in while we were meeting? And she said, no.
Okay.
Yes.
I have just one other quick item that I should have mentioned earlier.
Sure.
My apologies. It just came out this afternoon. But for any parents who are watching, we will be hosting a series of parent universities on August 17 and 18. One of the pieces of feedback that we got from the spring from parents was that they actually needed training with the technology and tools. So we will be running two sessions on the 17th. One will be in person at 6 o'clock, and that will be here. The second session, or yes, another session will be on August 18. That will be a virtual session.
They're both virtual?
No, there's one in person and then there's one virtual.
Okay, okay.
Seventeenth is in person, eighteenth, it's on the website. It's all published on the website. The 18th would be the virtual session.
Would it be possible to send out a, an, an school notifier or something out to everyone?
Sure.
Because, you know, if you don't check that website consistently, you may miss something like that. And I think that would be something people would value. The only other thing I wanted to mention was I thank you, Rebecca, for your feedback on the, the board handbook. I hope you all found your board handbooks. I know the new people got them because I've heard from them. I'd like to ask, we, we decided that we would kind of use this this year as kind of a, a tool for, for educating ourselves into how we will have better operating procedures. So I'd like to ask that you all pull that out and maybe in the, I think there's two September meetings. You could split this over two meetings.
There's only one regular meeting. I was just looking, so.
Okay.
One meeting.
One regular on the 15th.
All right. So maybe we could, for that 15th meeting, each look at the, maybe the first, I think it's only two, two or three topics. Let's say the first three tabs, introduction, team communication, and board meetings. We look at those and if you see anything in there that is confusing, that we can kind of clean up or make more, more clear, that would be great if you could bring those ideas in. And that'll give us all, put us all on the same page. We've all looked at those three. Then the following meeting, we can do the next three. And then we'll at least be on the same, same page with that. That would be great. Any thoughts about that or concerns?
I just, I flipped through it. You know, it's, mirrors our policies pretty closely. I would just, one thought I had was that we could add a chapter on Robert's Rules and how to run a meeting and stuff. I don't know who the parliamentarian is supposed to be, but, you know, every once in a while, I'll be in a committee meeting and like, I'll know, but why make an issue of it? And I think it would just be easier if we had a reference.
Section.
I'm not on the communications committee this year. I'm not sure if this is going back to you guys. So I just wanted to put that out at the, at the meeting.
I think if we come up over the next couple meetings with a lot of changes or whatever have to be done, we may have to assign it, the task, to somebody. If not, then maybe it'll be simply getting a copy of Robert's Rules and get in there. That's a good idea. Any other thoughts?
I can't remember if we discussed it briefly before or after. So with the, geez, the best way for parents to get questions answered is to read the website, first of all, go through the FAQs, second of all, and then be a part of those meetings and, and put in questions, which is out in the email. There's a link to that.
Yes.
Or through the reopening schools email, which I don't know off the top of my head, but it's on.
Reopening at GilderlandSchools.net.
There's a lot of, a lot of anxiety. I just want to make sure that everybody knows, like, what's the, what's the, probably the best method would be to review what's online first and then be on those meetings.
I would say that the other thing, if there is a building specific kind of question, they should go through the building principal. But we're getting a lot of questions like, how do I sign my child out at the end of the day? Real nitty gritty kinds of things that, we haven't done that yet. I mean, but we, we will, we absolutely will. So I know there's lots of, you know, building specific questions because that's going to be similar in some ways across buildings, but it could also be very different depending on the configuration of the parking lot and all that. So I think everything you just said, Kelly, is probably smart. Website, FAQ, please come to one of the sessions next week, submit questions to reopening. But we're going to update the FAQ all the time. So that's really, and it's set up so you don't have to read all 31 pages of it. It's in chunks like health and safety, social, emotional, well-being, instruction, technology. It follows our plan. So I'm not sure anyone wants to read 31 pages, but they may have a specific concern around a specific area so they can click right to it.
I just have one more kind of, I guess it's district-wide question that's come up. If there's a positive case at the school, do we, is there a Gilderland plan specifically that would be implemented? Or is it building by building? Or is it Department of Health?
So I've answered this question many times and it's a very unsatisfactory answer. And the answer is, it depends. So. So, and Rebecca, if you can jump in, and we have a contact tracer here, but, so, we go back to what happened with us in March. There was no social distancing, there were no masks, there was no prohibition against large groups of students gathered at orchestra, band, the lunchroom. So we actually provided to the Department of Health the information that they needed for contact tracing. So if we have a case now, it's really going to depend on what building they're in, what level they're at. So we could have a case, let's say, in an elementary classroom, God forbid, but it's going to be 14 children who aren't traveling anywhere in the building. So we'll have, we'll have the ability to kind of contain an issue. So if there is a positive case, I don't know that we would have to say, okay, we're closing down the entire district. With our, with the incident back in March, we had hundreds of kids and staff who may have been impacted, we had bus routes that may have been impacted. And there was just no way to say, where is the safe line? I mean, after we went all through that, the governor closed everybody anyway. But if we can determine with the help of the department, we can determine with the help of the Health Department that it's a very contained piece, you know, maybe we only have to close a pod or a wing or even a classroom, maybe a building. So it's, I, parents, they're desperate to know what's going to happen and are you going to tell me? And the answer is, it depends on the circumstances and I can't really tell you because we have to keep the confidentiality of the individuals and their medical, you know, anything related to their medical condition confidential, which is just entirely unsatisfying. I, I understand that. But I'm looking, did I, did I say anything where I'm looking at the medical people here?
I think it was very accurate, I mean, it's a different situation. You know, we're going to be containing the children in a way that we weren't in March. I understand it's an unsatisfying answer.
Yeah.
I would agree that the setup that you have, the plan has cohorts, so that is an advantage. I would say there's still that concern with like the bus, for example. So anything that involves people from the cohort mingling with other cohorts, I would still say that that's sort of a concern, speaking as a contact tracer, a public health person. I'd also like to add that it's hard for me to keep this mask on just for this meeting. I'm hot, I can't breathe very well. And so I encourage parents to think about what their own child is capable of in terms of keeping that mask on because some of the things that we've been hearing from parents are that they really only feel like the plan is safe if the kids wear the mask the entire day, they don't take it off and get breaks, et cetera. So if that were to happen, that's a pretty high expectation of a child. So I just want to put that out there for public consumption. It's a lot to ask of a teacher for a long period of time.
Can I ask a sort of related question about transportation? So you mentioned that I think 1,000 kids opted out of bus transportation. What is the impact on, on traffic at the schools?
Oh gosh.
We wish we knew. It's, it's much like classrooms, you know, where are the kids not coming from? Does it alter the route? Does it alter the number of students on the bus? And then we do have staggered start times, how much parent traffic is going to be intersecting with our bus traffic? That's a great unknown, how much car pooling is going to happen? We don't know. Unfortunately, we probably will not have the gravity of, be able to analyze that in enough detail to know who might be coming at what time to drop off their kid and at the same time, what the traffic patterns are throughout the town, what our buses are doing, all happening at the same time, so.
Need parent boot camp, you really do. I've been through it, our younger children when they went to private schools, everybody dropped off and the parents practiced the day before how to drop off a kid. And I tell you what, people in Gilderland don't know how to drop kids off because they'll stop at the very beginning and stop up the whole traffic and it's really critical, especially at GES. You don't get very far down that road until you're right on Western Avenue, so maybe very specific instructions to move up.
Yeah, well, and that's been a concern, Yonkers Elementary is the biggest concern.
If not a dry run.
The other thing is people will adapt pretty quickly, just like anything. So if you find that you're getting there at the same time as her, people start adjusting to figure out how to make the system work well or to stay out of the main traffic and so on and so forth. But we will have, as you know, we always have a lot of staff around on the start of school and we're going to need those staff as well to help with traffic and the entry of children into school. It's a whole new experience that we have from getting off the bus and into school along with more traffic.
Every time, every time I hear a question asked, I, I just shake my head at the job that most people are being asked to do. I mean, I think of Danielle and Portier and transportation now and the tremendous job that is or food service, you know, all the different parts. Like Blanca said before, we're asking a lot of people and if we could say anything, thank you for all your efforts.
And we have to ask because so much of the safety of this depends on human behavior.
Absolutely.
Everybody is a very critical component.
Yes. Thank you all. Can I have a motion to, oh, one other thing you have in front of you, I know some of the new people might not know this. We try to evaluate our meetings to kind of give ourselves a little grade on how we're doing. So if you could do this, that would be great before you leave and drop it off or Linda will pick it up from you. And can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Kelly and Judy, second. Okay, all those, all those in favor of adjourning? Say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, nine zero. We are adjourned.
Neil, you need signatures?
Yeah.